Have a present with us. Who do we have here? We have Sally Dale, we have Eaching Scott, we have our newly appointed member Cheryl Wolf. Member Heather Hannan will be joining us later. There's myself. Here's Jerius Chair who. I should, I'm sorry, I should have let off of Brian, of course, Brian Zakali, our town planner. We got Nancy Placari, our recording secretary. And we have WinCam who is recording us for posterity. So everyone should know that we are being recorded. I also want to remind everyone that they can reach the entire board as well as the town planner at planningboard@winchester.us. That's our mailing address. All of us see your email and so if you have any questions, please send it there. So today's schedule is we are going to start with some updates. Then we will have some minutes to approve. We're going to have a discussion within the board about what the board's visions are for 10 Converse Place. We will appoint liaisons to other town committees and boards. And we're going to take up a discussion of what the planning board's goals, priorities, actions, and schedules for same as for the next year. And then we will adjourn hopefully on time. So why don't we start the meeting, Brian, if you'd like to give us some updates?
Sure, so. An update on the Shared Streets. So we had about, we will have about $35,000 left over from the Shared Streets grant. And we're able to actually shift that over to use for lighting and widening of sidewalk of a project that is potentially going out to bid this summer around Waterfield and Church and and also, I don't want to get this wrong. But it's within and going towards the Center Business District. So it's good that all that, the rest of that money will be used. Another update is in two weeks, the June 8th, the first, starting at 7:00 PM is the North Main Street Study. So there will be. There is a flyer that's gone out. I know that Sally has also, and she can speak to this, has something like 100 flyers that she was going to do, just like she did last time. It was really effective. So that's, that's again, two weeks from tonight, June 8th. And you can, it should be on the Planning Board website as well as the carousel on the main Winchester website, that flyer. So that should be up very soon. I recently met with, with the Sims Corner Local Historic District Study Committee. So this is a new LHD Study Committee. We are now waiting to kind of, we are waiting to get a meeting with MHC. There's been a change in the director position of this, of the local government program division. Someone who'd been there for 20 something years. So replacing that director is, you know, really high priority for them, but a lot of of the projects and programs are in a little bit of a holding pattern at some level. So we're waiting to kind of work with MHC on that. And I guess the only other thing that's relevant is that there is a potential petition for, to get a vote, a referendum to repeal Article 6, which was the land development agreement for the Waterfield lot. So that's all the updates that I have. Back to you, D F.
Thank you. I had one. I had two questions actually on what you said.
I also forgot one thing, if you want, if actually, if I could take it back, I'm sorry, I'm taking it back. This, with this Wednesday, as in tomorrow night. The Who Lives in Winchester Housing Part 2, that where D F and I and members of the Housing Partnership Board as well as the Network, the Network for Social Justice will be having a program. So I don't know if D F, you were going to also talk about that, but that is tomorrow night and that is, that should be up on their website as well.
Yes, I was going to talk on it, but you stole my thunder, which is completely okay. Yeah, I, I was going to, so the, the news that I've received this evening on Articles, the recall petition for Article 6 is that a, the, the number of signatures required to have that election, special election for that residence petition, the local petition has been met and certified. And that the election dates would be either June 22nd, June 26th, or June 29th of this year. Now, I got that from someone who is not associated with the Towns Clerk office, but I believe that they are usually very factual. And I don't actually have anything more to say. I do have a question, a couple of questions, but I'll open up to the rest of the board if they have any updates and I'll ask you my questions. Anybody on the board have an update they'd like to share? Please speak up. I'm having a problem.
Well, it wasn't your problem. I was muted. I have two updates. One is that I did review the minutes this afternoon and I, or early this afternoon, and I apologize for the delay and I sent to Nancy some minor edits. And so she has those. And then, as you mentioned, I picked up the flyers at Town Hall this morning. And I will distribute them as much as possible, like I did last time, along North Main Street, stopped knocking on residential doors and and business doors from Skilling's Road up to, well, you know, the Anka Shop. And I guess Bavarian Motors, that kind of defines the end of town there. And the previous Planning Board candidate, Bill Fouchet, who's expressed an interest in staying involved, said he would help me do that. So that's very nice. And then I also have some, oh, I have one question for Brian about the North Main Street forum, which is, is it possible to email to all town meeting members and to non-town meeting member committee members? The flyer in case they see an interest in that.
Yes, I think that is, that is appropriate because the money that we were, were using to do this study was a town meeting appropriation. So usually to email town meeting members, it needs to be something related to town meeting, which, which, which is it. So I think that's possible.
Okay. And then some, I understand that some people who serve on committees are not town meeting members and they would get skipped if they didn't, if you didn't have some way of like de-duping the lists and getting their names added.
So there's no master list of all boards and committees of everyone's email address, but there are the boards and committees that we normally work with that, that I email on a regular basis. But I think you're talking about all, all boards and committees, correct?
Yeah, I'm just thinking holistically about town volunteers. It's okay.
Yep, I can certainly do a wide, a wide net.
Yeah, that's great. And because it's two weeks away.
Yep.
It's probably a good time to do it. If you do it too early, people forget. If you do it too late, people can't make it. And then I did have three questions, but I can hold those to the end.
Okay, thank you. Eaching, did you have anything you wanted to?
No, I do not. I don't think so. I do have questions about that special election, but maybe it's, I wonder if they're, because it's at the start of the summer vacation time. You know, is that gonna, are there, is there going to be mail-in voting for that?
No, that was, I, that's a town clerk question. So any, anything of run process is definitely town clerk. There's probably a minimum on, a maximum amount of time you could, you can bring the election relative to when it was, the petition was submitted, but other than that.
So 20, 20% of the electorate needs to come, needs to vote in order for the vote to count? So that's just another piece. And that's why there's a reason that the idea of doing some type of this election in the middle of July just wouldn't make sense because there's, there'd probably be almost no chance that you'd be able to get 20% of the electorate to be able to come out to vote at a local election in the middle of July.
It's, it's actually a little more constrained than that. And 20% of the town has to vote to overturn town meetings decision. So not only do you have to get 20% out, they have to be in the majority to vote down. So you will need a remarkable turnout in order for this to happen. Because I think we can assume that not everyone who turns out will be in favor of repealing Article 6. Okay, I lost my timer here. You're getting, so why don't I circle back? Cheryl, did you, first of all, if I haven't said already, welcome back, Cheryl. It's good to see you. And did you want to say any, add anything to our updates at the beginning?
No, happy to be back. Thank you.
Okay. So I had one question now as to your things, Brian, and that is what color, in terms of the, the money that's going to be spent on the new lighting that you mentioned? One of the current concerns that I have had and that some of my neighbors have had is about the colors of the lights. In particular, I know this sounds really arcane. In particular, white lighting is bad for insects because they lose their diurnal rhythms. So can we make sure that we have insect-friendly lighting? If that's actually such a thing that is possible?
I'm going to go with sure. I don't, I don't know enough about that too, but, but yes, I can, I can talk to, talk to the right people in engineering.
Yeah, I mean, obviously it hasn't been approved type of lighting, but there are some significant concerns about the effect on nighttime habits of insects and mammals due to ever-present white daylight lights. So, thank you. And then Sally, you had some questions?
I have, I have three questions that I sort of gleaned from my notes over the. Hold on, I just made them go away. Hang on. Here they are. So one of them was, Brian, you sent out a subsidized housing inventory that was really very positive in terms of us being not very far under halfway to our goal. And I, the thought that occurred to me was about making some kind of a, a link to, or just even like a little dashboard on the Planning Board page that says, you know, this is our goal, this is how many we have, this is what, what they are composed of, you know, what comprises that number. And then every time a permit, I guess it's, the trigger is a permit gets approved, right? And that means that we have that many more in the pipeline. Is that correct? And then also, would you be willing to set something like that up to help people be excited?
Yeah, the idea of, you know, almost like a real-time housing unit, it's, it's. I, yeah, it kind of depends on exactly how. You know, is it just the way, whether we're going to count it just the way that DHCD, you know, the, the Department of Housing and Community Development are the ones that kind of authenticate the, the SHI. You know, they're, you know, they're, they're the keepers of it. So I don't see why that would, that would be a problem. I, I know people are certainly interested in it and want to know how many, you know, how are we going to get those 40 units per year? And, you know, is that possible over a question of how many years? So it's certainly a question that people want to, that are, you know, they, they want to know the answer.
Right. And well, and you raise a really good point about the dashboard in terms of its actual accuracy, which is to say that if there are affordable units in a rental building, all the units count towards the DHCD count. And there's really much less actual affordable units. So I don't know if you want to, that's a, a sort of a policy or marketing question for trying to help people understand how close we are. I'm not sure what you want to do about that.
Well, if I might interrupt here, I think that we could. Certainly, one of the things that I, the way I presented at the town meeting, which I've learned, I got some numbers slightly off, would be. You know, we just have a table with numbered units, number of units that are affordable, number of the market rate, and how many of the affordable units actually count for SHI. The other thing that we should note is this is an extricably linked with the Housing Production Plan. And there is a town website for the HPP, which has unfortunately not been kept up to date as far as I can tell. So that's under the Select Board's control. So we should probably work with the Select Board to update, keep, to get that site updated. And that if we're going to. We should only have information in one place on the town's website, because that of course means you can only mess up once. And then we should probably decide whether it should be with the Housing Production Plan website. And if not, that if it's on that site, then we can certainly put a link from our site to theirs. Our pages to theirs, because people will not really, not everyone knows how to use the search function on the website to its best.
So I think that's a really good idea. Just because I posed the question, would you like me to reach out to Susan and ask her about that?
We can discuss that. I think part of our goals, priorities, actions, and schedules so that.
Yeah.
Yeah, just because, you know, someone else might want to jump in or someone might want to help you. And then it's all a question of priorities. Yeah.
And then my second, my second question, just to keep it rolling, and, and this has to do with our Holton Street project that's coming up. Somebody mentioned that there was a failed affordable housing proposal for Holton Street, and I wondered if you could set, send that to the Planning Board so we had that background.
There's, just to say, there are no plans they've got that were sent around for that site. It was a, a group to do about, yeah, in the mid 200 levels of, of units, but there was, it was no, there was nothing shared at the digital level to.
So it was all just conversation?
It was conversations and they, they did go to maybe two or three meetings at the Select Board level, but it was like, you know, they had, you know, boards, you know, with them. And we're, we're sharing ideas on what they were, you know, trying to think of. It is 7:50.
Yeah, okay, we'll just keep rolling.
Yeah.
Yeah, I should note that there were, there were community conversations that the developers went to, but it was, it never really got very far. Okay, so we are. And I see Heather Hannan has joined us. Welcome, Heather. So we are now at full strength as a board. Yay. If I can count, one, two, three, four, five, yes. Okay, so we're going to talk for 50 minutes about 10 Converse Place.
Are we doing approval, sorry, are we approving minutes?
Oh, my Lord, you're right, we are. I apologize. Let's go approve some minutes. I, I should have said something earlier.
We punted twice. So I think that's why we decided to put them at the front end this time.
Yeah, no, no, that's my fault. I actually, and then I was looking at my clock thinking that. So let's go do approval of minutes. And let's see, which ones do we have? We have quite a few to work through. So. Let me, can you bring them up, Brian, if that's possible? They're in the packet that Suzanne sent out, which I don't.
Yeah, just give me a minute. Alrighty, sorry for that. So first one here is April 26th.
Okay, so if there are, if there are, traditionally, we have simply said that if there are Scrivener's errors, we will just agree to approve the minutes as amended. As long as the, the corrections don't change the meaning. If there's anything substantial that you think should be corrected, then this is the time to say it. So let's start with April 26th. Anyone have any substantial corrections to this? Sally, you're, go ahead.
I had a clarification on number two, Springtown Meeting Articles, Article 7, first bullet, where it says, "Not clear on what SB did to use the lot for affordable housing." And I had suggested to Nancy, and this is per your approval, how the Select Board planned, not clear on how the Select Board planned to use the lot for affordable housing. Is that an accurate edit of what was not clear?
Well, my recollection is that we did not know what actions the Select Board had already done in order to.
Okay.
Because they were seeking to perhaps sell the land. And so that was my recollection.
Maybe it's more like attempt. What did they, what did they attempt already?
Yeah, so maybe if we just insert the word, what the Select Board attempted to do. But I, Sally, if you want to accept that modification to your modification.
Yeah, I do. I accept that. And Nancy, do you see that?
Yeah, let's just, if you could just make a note of that and pass it on to Nancy, we'll call that our.
So it's going to say, it's going to say, "attempted to do."
To use the lot for affordable housing.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, any other corrections to this document? Okay, if not, is there a motion to accept this with amendments? Someone will have to, okay, I'll read the motion. Someone will just say, "so moved." The move to accept the Planning Board meetings for Monday, April 26th, 2021 with amendments.
So moved.
Okay, Heather Hannan, and the second?
Yes.
Okay, Eaching seconds. We're going to have a roll call vote, please. Heather Hannan, please.
Hannan, aye.
Eaching, please.
Scott, aye.
And Sally, please.
Dale, aye.
And Jerius, aye, 4-0, one abstention. So let's move on to the next date, please. Which is Tuesday, April 20th, 2021. Any amendments to this one? Okay, not hearing any.
I just had, I just had one thing on, I guess it's on page two, the very first line, Ms. Scott moved to waive 8 dot 4 dot 3 perency. And I just wanted to insert the words of the Winchester subdivision regulations.
Okay, that's a great clarification. Any other?
I had any other, hold on. No, I did not.
Okay, excellent. So Brian, if you could please scroll back to the top of that document. So the motion, would somebody please move that we accept the meeting minutes versus Tuesday, April 20th, 2021 with amendments?
So moved.
Eaching moves, second, please.
Second.
Okay, Sally seconds, roll call vote, please. Eaching?
Scott, aye.
Sally?
Dale, aye.
Heather?
I was not there, so I'm.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I can't read. Apologize. I, Jerius, aye, so we are 3, 0, 2 abstentions. Let's move on to the next one, please.
Which is May 3rd? Is that what we're looking at?
We are looking at May 3rd. This was before town meeting and gathering. So any amendments to the May 3rd minutes?
The only suggestion that I made to Nancy was that, right where it says Article 6 and down later where it says Article 8, I just inserted what it would do. That would authorize the Select Board to enter into a land development agreement for the Waterfield lot. Because it will help people in the future who are trying to understand what we were talking about.
Okay.
And similarly for Article 8, that would authorize the Select Board to petition the General Court to allow a building permit surcharge for sustainability initiatives.
Okay, is everyone happy with those amendments?
Yeah, that's great.
Okay. So Brian, if you could scroll back to the top so I can remember the date, thank you. So would somebody please move to accept the Planning Board meeting minutes for Monday, May 3rd, 2021 with amendments?
So moved.
Okay, Sally Dale moves, Eaching seconds, roll call vote, please. Heather, please.
Hannan, aye.
Eaching, please.
Scott, aye.
Sally, please.
Dale, aye.
And Jerius, aye, 4-0 with one abstention. Well, let's move to the May 11th. Any amendments to the May 11th?
I had requested on page, let's see, what page, number two, where the paragraph begins, "Mr. Bellevoe, owner, colon." And on the very last sentence of that, I had requested that the words "in scale" be put in quotes.
Okay, so where we are, right there. I believe that if you're going, you. If we're going to quote what he said, we should either. This is a paraphrase of his speech and everything in there.
I have it in my verbatim notes that he said that. And it struck me as an unusual perspective.
Well, it's his perspective. I mean, what this, this, these notes are presenting a paraphrasing of what the owner said. And if, it should be accurate according to what his perspective is. I don't. I, I, my understanding is you want to put in an editorial quotes?
I think I do. I, I don't know what editorial quotes means, but he said specifically that he wanted the trees to be more in scale. He specifically used the phrase. And the reason I say that is because trees mature, and the trees that were lost on that property were mature trees. So I, I guess what he's intending to do is to install trees that will not at their mature state. I guess what he's intending to do is to install trees that will not, at their mature state, be above a particular size. So I mean, there's no sense in pressing the issue. We're pressed for time.
Okay, I, I mean, how does the rest of the board feel? That I, you know. I guess I made it known, I'm uncomfortable with putting the quotes there. How does the rest of the board feel?
Yeah, we don't normally put quotes.
Okay, so I guess if I understand, the other two members who've spoken are not in favor of quotes. So let's leave it as is. And then, any other, any other comments on this?
Hold on, let me just quickly scan. Well, when, this is on page four, when Brian was describing his background, it said, interested in the interaction of humans, animals, and the environment, which led the built environment planning. And I think that it meant to say to an interest in the. Is that, Brian, is that proper? Or true?
Agreed, yep.
Okay.
Okay, and then, yeah.
Okay, so.
So that date is on five.
Okay, so let's get to the top. So if someone would please move that we accept the planning board meeting minutes for Tuesday, May 11th, 2021, as amended?
So moved.
Okay, Eaching has moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Heather Hannon, seconds. Roll call vote, please. Sally?
Aye, Dale, aye.
Hannon, Heather Hannon, please.
Hannon, aye.
Eaching, please.
Scott, aye.
And Jerius, aye, so we are four, zero, one abstention. And we still have a few more, I believe, or is this a?
It is May 6th. And May 10th.
Which one did we just do?
May 11th.
Oh, so we're out of line, we're out of order. Okay, not a problem. Let's go to May 6th. This is a short one, I believe. Are there any amendments to this one?
I have one minor.
Okay, why don't we just?
In the very first paragraph, second sentence, where it says, the planning board has a voting member attending, who was Heather von Mering, until a new planning board member is assigned, she is still attending but not voting. And I thought for clarification that the sentence could say the planning board has a former voting planning board member attending, who was Heather von Mering, until a new planning board member is assigned, she's still attending but not voting.
I think that's, that's a good clarification. Any other? I'll assume everyone else on the board feels likewise. Any other amendments to this?
No.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the planning board meeting minutes on Thursday, May 6th, 2021, as amended?
So moved.
Okay, so Eaching has moved. Second, please.
Second.
You're so, okay. I missed that. I spoke too soon. Who seconded?
I did, Sally Dale.
Okay, Sally seconded. Roll call vote, please. Heather?
It says I wasn't there. I don't, I don't really remember.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that. My apologies. So Eaching, please.
Scott, aye.
Sally, please.
Dale, aye.
And Jerius, aye, we have three, zero, two. And then, last one, I hope, Monday, May 10th. Another short one. Any amendments to this one?
Let me just make sure I'm on the right one here. This is really confusing with so many, May 11th. So you're just the very last one. Let me just. Oh, right. Well, all I had thought was that where, in number one, Springtown meeting articles continued discussion where there was a reference to Article 6 to repeat that that would authorize the select board to enter into a land development agreement, agreement for the waterfield lot. Again, just for the clarity to future readers.
Sure, sounds good.
And then under Mr. Zakali's comments in the third bullet, there is a standard, if I'm not mistaken, Brian, help me, that limits how much a developer can make.
Yeah, there's a maximum.
Yeah, so that putting that limits in there provides a little bit more clarity and information. That was my only edits.
Okay, I think that's fine. So if I could have a motion to accept the planning board meeting minutes from Monday, May 10th, 2021, as amended?
So moved.
Okay, that's Eaching has moved. Second, please.
Seconded.
Okay, I didn't, I missed two, I'll call that.
Oh, again, it was Sally Dale.
Okay, Sally, please. Thank you. Roll call vote. Heather?
Hannon, aye.
Eaching?
Scott, aye.
Sally?
Dale, aye.
And Jerius, aye, that's four, zero, one abstention. Thank you very much. We are now caught up, I believe. We are now, unfortunately, 15 minutes past our time, but let us dive right into Congress place. Thank you, Brian, for reminding me of this. So. What I thought I'd do is very quickly go over to provide some context for the discussion, do a very short introduction to the FAR and the, not the FAR, the open space possibilities for the site. And then we would open up the board, all the members of the board would have two minutes to speak about their personal opinions on what the site can or can't do. Then we will move into a more focused discussion where we will look at FAR and open space for 20 minutes. We would then discuss possible unit sizes, and then we would we would talk about parking. And we wouldn't be getting into design because that's not, that's not one of the issues that's really the most important in terms of what can be put on this site. So Brian, I, if you could pop up those few slides I sent you earlier. And I will, because we're behind on time, I will try to get through this more quickly. So those are just, just a few things. And this is just so that we understand what percentage of the lot can be open space. And these are taken from the, the design by the owner, Ian Gillespie. And here you see a building which is aligned with the two streets. And this is a 10% open space. And so you can see that if you look on this diagram, there's a dashed line to the right, which borders the the mill pond and the river. If you just go down there, yeah, that essentially, no, I meant the double, I'm sorry, the section with the smaller dashes outlined as a path.
Can you zoom in a little bit? Because I'm on a tiny computer.
So, Dea, what you're referring to is the outer line of the green area?
No, I'm actually referring to the fainter dashed lines which denote the town property. Or I don't know if it's necessarily the town property, but it seems to. Yeah, to be honest, I don't know what that is. But that actually borders along the mill pond at some level. And so I don't know how much of that is within the property line. I'm guessing not very much. But this is. Go ahead.
No, does the table above that's slightly cut off have a key to what that simple dash line is? It does not.
It does not. But let's just, I just want to point out that the, the dashed, the very dark line is the property boundaries. So what you see here is when you have only 10% open space, it's a very tiny amount. And there is still some open space that's, that's the town controls outside of it. But it's very small. If we move to the next page, we go to 30% open space, which does increase it dramatically. And then if we go to the next page, please, we'll see what you got with 50%. And just for those who do not remember, this, the 50% open space was the amount of open space the previous board felt comfortable with because of its proximity to the mill pond and the river. And to provide some sort of a setback from the river now. Or I'm sorry, to provide an extension of green space. And so, Brian, if you go to the next slide, please. What you see here are three different designs that were presented as to how to make the building and the green space work together. So we had on the left, the very sharp edge and, and just essentially a rectangle. And as you move to the right, it's a little more natural. And then the third one, the figural edge, which provided this much larger green space and buffered the mill pond from the building on that side. If you go to the soft edge, you'll see that the building is significantly closer to the water on the Converse Street portion. And thank you for that slow pen. Ken Burns knows nothing. Okay, so those are the, those are the designs that were presented to the previous board. We don't know what will be coming in two weeks. But they should give you an idea of what feel in terms of open space you might like. Since we are going to be concerned, I think, with the footprint of the building and the height. So I think we have to be happy with what the footprint looks like, and then we can work on the height. Because the you know, open space gives us a footprint. And then we work within the FAR to get an appropriate height. So now, if there are any questions, please jump right in. Because next.
Well, I have questions. If Brian can go back to, I guess, possibly the first slide where we were talking about the different dotted lines. So, um, one thing I know is that there is a 25-foot buffer zone from the edge of the pond to the edge of 25 feet. And that, regardless of who owns the land, whether it's the town or a private owner, cannot be built within. And so, Brian, can you indicate which of those lines is the 25-foot buffer? No, it's that. It's, okay, so it's the one that's the long dash. Okay, so scrolling up, it looks like it kind of goes. So, okay, I see what's happening is that there is a small portion of the owner's land that is inside the 25-foot. And I see that in this footprint of 19,400, he maintains that buffer. Okay, that's very helpful. This, I just, I really would like to understand what these dotted lines are, but it's maybe something for not to.
I think that, yeah, this is just to give you a general idea of how much of the lot is covered. Obviously, you could tweak the building a bit to make sure that it's inside of the appropriate buffer zones.
Right, right.
So we're not, we're not, you know, so we're not looking at this design. So, so what I'd like to do now is to move to a discussion in terms of having each member present what their priorities and visions are for this site. So that you can air out anything you'd like. We are running, okay, we're at 2015 right now, and we were supposed to have started at 20, so I could say, okay. Why don't, if anyone, if everyone could do it within, you know, 60 to 90 seconds, a minute to a minute and a half, that would help. So I can call on people. Why don't I? Why don't I just start calling on people and you can talk? So. Eaching, would you like to begin?
Sure. I appreciate the choice of the former board to do the 50% open space. I think that there will be resistance to it, this building, no matter what. But with that provision of 50%, it will be a lot more palatable. And, yeah, I think that, you know, for citing of that open space, I don't know if it's only visually open to the public, but if it's physically, if it's sort of a public-private space, I mean, I think that would be fantastic. And if you go to the second slide, Brian, of the first, I, I know that the last board had picked the figural open space, and I that, I'm drawn towards that too because of the sighting, sunlight, south facing. I think it adds a real nice public space if it should, you know, if it's not cordoned off. And I, I think it would add a lot.
Okay, so I'm taking notes here just to be complete. So to paraphrase you, you would prefer that the building be nestled as closely as possible to the corner of Converse and Mount Vernon so that you could provide open space between the building and the pond.
Yes, I, yes. I feel like that figural space would be the most useful to the town. Whereas the other ones are more sort of corridors, widened corridor.
Okay. And whether it was, other than that, was there something else that you envisioned for the site? You can go wild here. It is not just limited to this.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, I went through some of the presentations from before, and I know that the architect had shown, you know, what is existing with what's proposed. And I think that juxtaposition is very scary for a lot of people. And I wonder if in the future presentations to talk about, you know, the massing of the subsequent elements next to it, that it might be, you know, make more sense to people to envision it a longer term rather than to see just this humongous change.
Okay, so.
May I ask, do you have a question?
It's.
No, I'll wait.
Yeah, I just, I want to reserve this spot for members.
Yep.
And I'm trying not to prompt, but anything else on there, Eaching?
I mean, I saw some of the designs from before, and I thought they really did well, was really thoughtful and respectful. Given the FAR. I think I'd like to see some of it come back. And I know 3.0 is really hard for people to take. And it seemed like the developer kept coming down in height and trying to come to, you know, consensus. So I, I mean, I applaud that. I hope to see something similar.
Okay. And then I will stop pushing you. Sorry, my apologies. And I have forgotten to keep track of time. So why don't we go next to? Sally, why don't you go ahead? You had a question. We may as well. Why don't you go ahead?
Um, so actually, oh, when Eaching said that she wanted the developer in the future to show the building along with the massing of subsequent elements, do you mean by that, the massing of what would be built on the west half of this PUD area?
Can I answer, Dea?
Yeah, yeah, please.
Okay, yeah. Also, yes, the PUD encompasses the left side, and it seems like it's two-thirds of it or so. And I think to see that all come together might help people envision things in a longer term.
Right. Okay, that was helpful clarification. So my, my thoughts about this site are, with regards to the open space, I actually favor sort of the soft edge look that you're, see in the middle here. The pond itself and the lawn across at the library, they are in themselves an experience of open space. And I like the idea of there being a wider open space and that it be soft like that is described. So that it becomes a place where people can truly gather and be. And that is very much part of what our master plan called for. As far as the FAR goes, FAR footprint and height are like a three-part equation, and you change one and the others move. And my feeling is that there's very specific things in our central business district regulations and our zoning bylaws that a developer is required to do to achieve a 3.0 FAR. And I don't know if the developer is interested in doing those things. A 2.5 FAR is permitted if the special permit granting authority, which would be us, which would be we, agree that it meets the criteria of the special permit. My feeling would be to keep the height, if you go back to the very first page. Um, my feeling would be, um, to keep the height, if you go back to the very first page, Brian, um, uh.
I'm I'm gonna.
Yep, um, that what you're looking at there is basically four layers of a layer cake. And in my view, um, I would like each layer to step back, and I would like the top layer to to have, well, yes, right. And so and then there's questions in the zoning bylaw about mechanicals not exceeding a certain amount. Um, and so it's important for us to know overall height. Um, when we talk about this, and it's possible that the height limitations that make the building, to me, and and I think a good number of other people in town, um, happier with the building is to keep it you know, less than four stories, and and you know, we talk about height, the height of the ridge beam at the Brown and Stanton building is forty feet. And so to me, not including a minor provision for mechanicals, to me, the top of the top floor should be forty feet, and and that ends up ending up being, I think, three and a half stories. Um, I just don't want this building to be so large, and in fact, if it's impossible to do, going back down to the other slide, the soft edge. Um, um, I would favor, um, less open space because the the pond and the path and all of that are open space itself, and I have other ideas that we don't have time to talk about with regards to how the building can relate to the pond.
Okay, thank you, um, I'm gonna have to cut you off there, Sally, I'm sorry, we just hit four minutes. Um, I do want to point, Brian, do you recall what the as right height is for this?
Yeah, it is forty feet, which is um, to essentially, yeah, I mean, it's it, um.
Okay.
It was actually, it was forty feet, so which is the same as the residential zone.
Okay.
Special permit is forty-eight.
Right, I just wanted to know what the as right is, thank you. Um, so, um, can we turn now to, um, Cheryl? Are you there, Cheryl? Oh, does Cheryl have the lead already?
No, 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 I'm here.
Okay, okay, please.
You can see me, right?
Uh, on my screen, you've disappeared, but that means I have to make my screen bigger, there you are, okay.
All right, sorry, um, so, um, I am much in favor of open space, um, so I'm in in the same uh, mind frame as the previous board. Um, I think the that these diagrams, um, speak very, um, true to how that open space, um, would create a place versus a path, which I think Sally was referring to. Um, the urban edge, the the view, well, first of all, it's always a a view onto the water, which is what makes this open space so very important um, to the entire town. Um, and has always been blocked by a, you know, a a very large building and a parking lot. So having that, the green, um, open space is, first of all, very, very important. The soft edge, um, sorry, the urban edge is just a a view straight on to the fire firehouse, which I don't find of interest, and I don't think that that the shape of that open space, um, really responds to the water or to um, to making a place. Um, uh, the soft edge, I think I find better, but I I'm not at all fond of the this sort of tallish Ephesus building that doesn't have, um, doesn't really do much in terms of an urban, um, you know, approach. I think actually the firehouse has a better face to the town. Um, and so I, I'm not as um, much in favor of the soft edge. I think the figural edge takes into account both the building and the open place making open, open space making a place and and creating, um, a real, um, a figure honestly that has to do with, um, the edge of the water, has to do with the stair, um, the fish stair or whatever, um, right next to the bridge, correct, that that curve there. And I think that having a path along the side of the building, if the, if the first floor is, um, is commercial, I think having a path along the east side to connect back to Mount Vernon is is, um, is plenty in terms of the amount of open space that's just across that's next to, um, Town Hall. So I think putting a lot of open space on either side of a narrow piece of water versus creating a nice big open space that looks out into the larger part of the water. I just find this a much more successful, um, use of, of uh, the buildings as well as the green space as well as the water.
Yeah, I guess I should point out that we don't know whether they will remove the old laundry building or not, so that is still a possibility that they will still, they will keep the laundry building, which will certainly change the relationship of that part to the water. So, um, is there anything?
What is the laundry building, I'm sorry, Dan?
That's the large building that's on site right now.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, that, so, um, and is there something that you wanted to say about the height of the building that you've, that you would, you're comfortable with?
Um, I think in all the studies that they did, the the only thing that I felt was missing were, um, were sun studies. I'd like to better understand, um, the height of the building in relationship to, um, movement of the sun on the site. And, um, but other than that, I I feel like height and materiality are intertwined, and I think a large open, open space is going to to um, work with, um, all of the heights that I've seen so far in terms of design.
Okay, um, I'm gonna have to catch you off there unfortunately, uh, Heather?
Yeah, um, my priorities for the site, I think that was the question, right? Are that, um, the open space is uh, enhances the bikeway and also creates like a stop along it. So, um, I mean, most of the space, the general direction of the library or Lincoln, but I think that's where the public open space should be. Um, I'd like to see active uses along all the edges of the building. Um, I know in, or I guess all edges of the site, depending on what they do, but I know in previous things that we've seen, um, I wasn't satisfied with the number of doors um, that would activate the space, and so, um, or to make it feel safe and alive on all of the edges. Um, I'd also let Converse Place to be integral to their urban design, so that that doesn't feel like a back alley, but that that feels like a safe welcoming place to, um, to walk through as well. Um, and then I would like the view from across the water for that to not be like the back of the building, like that they've really thought about the design um, and how, what the view of it is from the back too, not just on Mount Vernon.
Okay, and, um, if you had to choose just offhand, would you, how would you balance open space versus, um, building height?
Um, I think it depends on how well it's designed. I don't think it has to be very large. Um, I mean, I think there should be parts that are green and probably parts that are hardscaped, but that it has to do more with the experience when you're going along the water there and how it, uh, opens up and then, you know, closes back on the bike path, so. I think it has to do more with design for me than like a percentage.
Okay. So you, you are open to whatever that they bring, but you will push back if you think it doesn't meet your design requirements.
Yeah, and I don't think it should be privatized, like a one version. You know, there was a certain amount for, say, like seating versus if someone wants to sit there and read a book.
Okay, so this should definitely.
Restaurant seating.
Right, a, a public open space.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, okay, and then I will quickly give my two cents worth. So, um, I really do like the fifty percent, I like a lot of open space there, I think that um, it really adds to the openness of the area. Um, so I am, I I tend towards the fifty percent open space. Um, my I, I, I think that the design of the structure will I'm okay with taller buildings as long as I feel that the design works with the neighborhood so that the scale is approached appropriately. So, um, I don't have a problem with taller buildings. Um, I don't have all of the design background that the other members of the board do, so I will borrow their expertise on that. I think Heather said things quite well, I wish I could have come up with ways of saying the same thing. Um, so at that point, I'd like to, uh, move us now into the more, um, formalized part of our thing where we focus on, first of all, let's see what timing we have, we are supposed to have until nine oh five. No, I'm sorry, we're supposed to have until eight fifty, which only gives us twenty minutes. So what I'm gonna hope we can do is maybe push that back a little um, and start talking about, so the biggest thing I have here is this discussion of what sort of FAR and what sort of so there's a, there's a, um, as Sally pointed out, FAR footprint and open space are all intertwined. And we know that.
The height, the height is intertwined, and FAR footprint and height are intertwined.
I'm sorry, that is right, you did say that, yes. FAR footprint and height. So, um, what I'd like to do is to have a discussion about what people feel is the amount of, of what they could, what they think this site can accommodate in terms of FAR. Let's start with the footprint. I think that most people, from what I gather, well, there are two people who are okay with the fifty percent. Perhaps three people said fifty percent was okay. Um, Sally, I believe you said that you were willing to trade off open space to get less height. And Heather, you are more open to see how the design impacts open space in terms of how the experience, is that a correct summation? And if if we start from there, then maybe we can say, how much are you willing to accept in terms of height in FAR on this site? And it's an open, it's an open, um, conversation.
Launch.
Go ahead, Sally.
So the town right now doesn't have in this immediate streetscape a six-story building that would be, um, hmm, fifty-nine feet or more. Um, it's a little bit inconsistent in the code, we have to fix an inconsistency, it says not more than ten feet above. Um, through a special permit, but then it also says in the map fifty-nine feet, so is it fifty-eight or fifty-nine, I don't know, that's immaterial because that building will block the views from the high areas across the pond, um, forever. And it will also set a precedent for the rest of the town to be populated with six-story buildings. And I love open space, I am an outdoor girl all the way. And I believe that we can get a four-story building on this property, and it can be within, um, the forty-eight to maybe fifty feet or something, maybe forty-eight feet, that's the special permit dimensions. Um, and preserve, I I agree completely with Heather Hannon that it's entirely about the design of the building. It's not, we're not just talking about a box at all. And a building that has, um, interesting surfaces and 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 ins and outs is is not a box. It is a dynamic, um, even almost organic type of a form. And that kind of a form kept below, say, forty-eight feet or ideally below forty feet, so that it's not taller than the Brown and Stanton building, um, would do much to add tremendous quality to our central business district, the the, everyone agrees that the laundry building is not an asset. Um, it's, we look past it, so, so I would favor a middle ground, sort of like in, you know, it's the happy medium, as we all know, and and so Brian, if you go down to the next diagram. So, uh, no, I don't think I meant that one, go back up. Back up. So now that is not enough open space, although see, I'm still, this, this is why I'm very confused about these dotted lines, I'm assuming that the dash, long dash, short, short, long dash, short, short is the property line.
That's correct.
And what he's choosing to do here to make his pro forma is to push the building out to within X feet of the property line um, and still maintain the twenty-five foot buffer, well.
It violates the twenty-five foot.
Let's just stay away from the details of this.
Well, the problem is God and the devil are in the details.
But we're not talking about the details of a design now, Sally, I'm just trying to understand what direction that we want the site to go.
The direction that I want to go is I want to find the perfect happy medium between FAR, height, and open space, and I don't believe that given how incredibly open that space is now and how much the town already enjoys it, that we need to go to fifty percent open space when we could perhaps what was the middle, what was the middle open space diagram, I'm just.
It was thirty percent.
Thirty percent, so Brian, take us back to thirty, this is thirty right here, okay? Now, this massing diagram is is perhaps just that. Um, but it implies a boxy building. And nobody wants to see a boxy building on this site, it will be jarring to the look and feel of our town, our precious town, and this is a diamond of a site in our village, our our entire town, so we can't put something boxy there.
But Sally, please, we're just talking about FAR, we're not talking about design here, we understand that these are massing diagrams, they are looking blocky, so let's not worry about what it's gonna look like. Let's just look at the massing. I do want to point out that the existing building on the site is actually, I believe, sixty-seven feet, six, no, sixty-two feet. So you're ready?
Right.
Yeah, it's sixty-two feet high, so it's important when we talk about building height to just use, it's only four stories. But it's sixty-two feet, so please, let's, let's, let's stick with feet, because otherwise we can get very confused.
Well, and that is exactly right, so I will stick to feet, and and it's it's interesting because as time has gone by with with development and architecture, building height has increased per floor because of mechanical between floors and because of a market appeal for higher.
Sure, but let's just, so we're just talking about FARs and open space, and so the other thing I want to point out is that the Lyceum Building across the street, which is currently two stories, can go up another story and a half, or maybe two and a half, I forget how much, Brian, could you remind me?
Um, I, I believe it's another, I believe it's one, one and a half, one and a half over here.
One and a half, so there has, some of the buildings are allowed to go up higher because, that one in particular, because it used to have more stories.
Right, and similarly, um, I guess the Lyceum is the corner of Mount Vernon and and Maine, is that right, Brian?
It's, uh, ceilings.
That's correct, so three and a half is very different from six stories and and, you know, a three and a half.
Oh, what do we got there? We've got Zoom bombed.
Yeah, that's okay. Hold on, got him out, well, sorry about that, folks, you can continue.
Wow, well done, Brian, so I'm sorry, I'm being long-winded and I wish not to be.
I just, so let's.
Can I say something about?
Yeah, so please, someone else join the conversation.
Thank you.
Um, so when we're talking about height, I think also it's not that the entire site needs to be the same height, right, like maybe we have, um, a higher part over across from the fire station, but we preserve views in the rest of the site by it being, you know, four stories and other parts of the site so that we have views of the steeples or, you know, whatever is important for a view shed, I I just think when we're talking about height, it's not just, okay, the entire parcel will be covered with the same height.
That's right, I agree with you, Heather.
Right, so. Brian, go ahead.
I I was gonna, I was just gonna kind of put the four. I, I was gonna, I was just gonna kind of put the four corners around like what we're talking about in terms of height and FAR. Just in general, so the, 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 the height that, that is by right here is forty, is forty feet, which is the same by right height. That's in all of the residential districts that people can build single-family homes and duplexes. And townhomes and apartment buildings and all that. And in some places forty-five feet. So there's other places in town, including the GBD. Two and three that, you know, it's, it's forty-five feet. So the idea is that the center business district, that this was passed in twenty fifteen. To, to put, this is where the density should go. This is where two hundred to two hundred and fifty units should go. The idea is that the special permit height outside of its forties, like I said, is forty-eight. But the idea is that the open space special permit, which can go to fifty-nine, it was contemplated specifically for this site. Because of its relationship to the water. So the idea of, the whole idea of the open space special permit, you can't really see it, but you. In the dimensional requirements, it says open space special permit. This was contemplated for this site that basically says. It's a, you know, you can, so whether it's fifty-eight or fifty-nine, Sally, you bring up a good point. It is unclear in the bylaw where it says that whether it actually is fifty. Here it says fifty-nine, but, or sorry, in the dimension, it says fifty-nine. But so the idea is that a, a building that tall, fifty-eight, fifty-nine feet was contemplated. You know, this is what was put in front of town meeting. It was overwhelmingly passed. The idea is that it obviously has to fit in right design-wise. But a building at fifty-nine feet was definitely contemplated for this site. That's all I want to say.
So I wanna, thank you, Brian. I want to make sure that everyone else gets a chance to join in the conversation. So. Heather, why don't you continue? And then Yicheng and Cheryl, if you want to jump in, please do.
I don't have anything else to say about the height right now. Just that. Uh, just that I think it could be nuanced and there are parts of the site that could handle more height than other parts.
I agree.
Okay. So Cheryl or Yicheng, please.
I, I just had a question for Brian. The, the open space version of this, where you get to go to fifty-eight or fifty-nine feet. What's the requirement in the open space? Is it fifty percent?
The requirement, I believe, I can get up in a minute. I believe the requirement is that it has to be. I believe it's at least, or you have to be more than the, more than the ten. But fifteen percent of that needs to be usable open space, meaning that. I, that we, and we did the term usable of at least a certain dimension wide. So it wasn't just like a narrow strip that counted. It had to be a minimum distance. Wide where this clearly would count for that. I could bring it up in the zoning bylaw, but it's fifteen percent of it having to be what's quote. Defined as usable open space.
Yeah, if you could bring that up, Brian, because just, you know, knowing whether or not the thirty percent is consistent with that.
So I'm sorry, it's twenty percent.
Yes, it is twenty percent. It's seven, three, twelve, one, paragraph six.
That's how they got to thirty because they took the ten and the twenty. And so the thirty seemed.
Right, but, and, and so one. I don't understand where fifty percent open space scenario with a six-story building is, is something that was. Conceived of when the central business district bylaws were written. Or where it is a positive precedent to set for a fragile aesthetic.
Yeah, well, I, I let's, I. I don't think looking at the bylaws, the bylaw doesn't say what you can build in terms of, I mean, you can certainly build something which is fifty percent. I, I think, I mean.
But it doesn't give you permission to go above fifty-eight, fifty-eight feet.
But in the PUD, it gives you that permission.
It does that if it, if it meets other conditions which include diverse housing opportunities.
Yes, but, but this site was envisioned for. Big development. And so. If the, if the applicant comes back at the PUD, they may be asking for height again because that is allowed. By the discretion of the board. So I think that. So I don't, I don't, you know, I, let's, I want to keep this conversation, going back to those who haven't spoken yet. Cheryl, does that, is that sufficient for your answer?
Yeah, that was helpful. I think I just need to. Read them a little more deeply into it. I'm wondering if the dashes that are here. There's two of them that are, seem to relate to some degree around to the water. If those, yeah, the hundred-foot. Resource buffer and then it looks. Yeah, I, I don't know what, what is. There was something in the wording that just, that said something about. You know, not being a wetland, but I'm wondering if any of, of what we're looking at here has anything to do with.
Yeah, it's, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't include this wetland buffer here. So it wouldn't include this portion, this little corner here because, in terms of that. But I, I still believe that this would, this would, this would work out because fifteen percent of it would be usable along, along here. Potentially. So. It's close. I mean, they're gonna have to prove it whenever they come in. I mean, just because we're running out of time a, a little bit. Just like they did last time, you know, instead of showing, what they showed was the maximum amount of, of a three-point-O FAR. And showed four stories, five stories, six stories. What, you know, since the FAR of three-point-O did not work out. Now, you know, there's going, there are going to be several options probably before the board in terms of where that direction should go. Whether it's a, a by right at one-point-five with the Mill Pond thing. And it's a question of whether or not that two-point-O FAR or up to the two-point-five would require the. The building to stay or not. And that's kind of the question I think that's going to be before. I think there's no doubt. A by right project at one-point-five FAR, this building will remain. I, I just, I just, so that, that's part of the conversation that should be guiding something. So, and it's, so it's, clearly the PUD of three-O is not necessarily something they're going to pursue unless the board. A majority of the board is saying pursue that three-point-O. My guesses are gonna come in, like I said, at a one-point-five, a two and a two-point-five, generally looking at the footprint and the height, which is exactly the conversation we're having this evening. So that they, they can at least put something in front of the board that is within the zoning that's, that's passable, right? That, that, that's, that's kind of what this is about.
So I, I'm gonna continue to play moderator here. Yicheng, did you wanna?
Yeah, I, I do want to say something. I, I think that at a certain point, we have to respect the history of the town's vote. To identify this area as high-density development of a PUD. And also to really respect the housing production plan. Of the sort of urgency that we need in producing housing. And at a certain point, sort of have to. Let go and, I mean, kind of. Trust that a very capable architect. And our, our input. And the town's history of wanting this to be high development, we just sort of have to just. I mean, time is of the essence in some ways. And I do think that the laundry building. You know, I, I would, I would love for a very thoughtful. Either one building or, you know, it could be working up a bar building, whatever, L building. That it's thoughtful and it, it sort of just anchors this, this PUD, which and we're expecting, hopefully, hoping, I guess. And the town is identifying the west side to also. So. I think, you know, I, I don't know about height, but I, you know, I would encourage some more. Density. And, you know, it might be in the apartment types or the condo types. That we lack in town. And I think it would be a fantastic place to, to live. What, what a dream to live in town and to, and to be in that, in that area. And with, you know, great design, it could be beneficial to the entire town.
Thank you. So we have, we have now reached the official, what we had scheduled to be the end of this. Discussion, but I, I think there are still a few more things we might want to consider and we don't have that. We're obviously not going to resolve them all. This evening. Personally, I, I feel that. If we're going, that. I personally would like to see the laundry building gone. I agree with Brian that if they come in with lower FARs, that building will stay. I think that it already is a significant. Has a significant negative impact on the view shed. So even though the new building was, or the previous design was much larger. I think it had a much less of an impact. So. I, if they come in and they say they have to retain the laundry building in order to make this work for them, I will be a little disappointed. I think there's a trade-off between what I agree with Yicheng in terms of putting housing in there. And, you know, what level of, what, what is the cost per unit going to be? If we're looking for a large number of units in order to increase the affordability component. Which is, I think, what we might want, then that will significantly change the. Finances on this project. Now, if they don't have to take down the landing building, it might make it cheaper. They're certainly not going to go in, I think, with this. As, as a high-quality material and such, if they're mostly going to be dealing with non-penthouse suites. I mean, they were expecting to make big money on the top floor because you have this gorgeous view. Out across the water and up into the fells. You're not going to get that with the laundry building in the way, unless you convert the top story of the laundry building to a suite. Again, I don't know that they can take out the four floors and turn them into five inside that building. They may be stuck with four floors. Those are going to be fairly expensive, I'd imagine, because they'll have tall ceilings. So. I think the finances, I don't know what to expect from the finances on this thing in terms of what they consider profitable for them. I would like to see a lot smaller units that are lower. I was, we're not going to reach our, you know, we're, we're not going to get five hundred thousand dollar units in there. That, that are not subsidized or de-restricted, which is, you know, what I would hope we might want to get, but we're not going to get those. So. I'm kind of, in terms of the FAR, I really am waiting to see what kind of mix they give us. In terms of trying to figure out how we can maximize the number of affordable units we got out of this. So. I previously was happy with the three FAR, provided they did something spectacular on affordable housing. We never got to the negotiation point, so I don't know what's going to come up here. So the other thing, and I guess.
Before you go next, I just have to ask a clarifying question about FAR. When the owner of the land calculates FAR, is he not adding the floor area ratio of. Of presumably the remaining laundry building plus the new structure?
Yes, yes, he is.
Right. So, so. The FAR of the laundry building is included in the two-point-five or the two-point-O or whatever.
That's correct, but the FAR of the laundry building is lower than a comparable building with modern-sized floors.
Which is a good reason to take it down.
But it's again, all about, the other thing that we need, that I had on my list was unit size and parking. So, and, and maybe we can, I think, unit size. I think more importantly, in terms of acceptability downtown is parking. So one, let me just lead off by saying the, the previous project had underground parking. Which is going to be expensive in this location. I, the discussion there was because it's in, it's very close to the water. And so putting in underground parking required systems which were more expensive. So if we're going to a different. A, a, a building with a lower FAR where the financials might not be as great, we are, we may see some above-ground parking. Which. You know, so that's a trade-off. So I, I'd like to know, is the board, would the board be, you know, more comfortable with reducing some of the parking requirements on this site? In order to get more open space and a trade-off somewhere else? Brian, could you, could you remind us what the required parking is?
Yeah, the required parking is point seven-five. But it is required that it needs to, that, like, they can't just put. Parking on the first floor where, there, there can't be surface parking as part of the design guidelines in the center business district. So. The, the, the. Yeah, so it's not like we would be able to see the cars from either of these streets.
Well, they, they would have to be masked, but since we do have a special permit, if they put it under the building.
Correct. I'm just, I'm just saying that they, even if it would be at grade, they would not be, no parking would allow, is allowed to be. They will, yeah, like this, like surface parking, like this. This is not allowed for new, for new construction.
Okay, so they could, for instance, put it as the. Envelope, but on the first floor. Which would reduce the number of units.
Correct.
Okay. So why don't, why don't we do a five-minute discussion of what people think we can do on parking?
I don't know if I, if I answered, but point, point seven-five was the minimum, but it is allowed to go down to zero based upon its location. I don't think the planning board would necessarily want it to go down to zero, but I'm just letting you know that that option is part of where the zoning bylaw, I mean, it was baked into the zoning bylaw. So, sorry for that. I'm done. Thanks.
So I have a, a quick question about. The commercial, that there's, commercial space that they're showing in the, in the design that they've, they've put forward. Is, is there any requirement? For them to provide commercial space and how much? Because that's also competing with that first floor. If the parking can't go down.
No, it is, it is not, it is not required.
It is, Brian. It's point seven-five per thousand square feet of commercial space.
I always, I thought, I misunderstood the question. I thought you were saying that is a commercial space required in this building? But you're saying is, are commercial parking spaces, correct, Cheryl?
No, I wasn't. I was asking about commercial space. Right now they're showing potential restaurant, you know, they want to. Continue the, the feel of Mount Vernon with, with, you know, commercial property. Or rental, sorry. Okay, so there's, it's not a requirement then?
No.
Okay.
We, we did have a discussion. About whether the previous design could simply. Put housing units on the first, on the ground floor. Instead of commercial. And I'll reiterate, my concern is that. I'm concerned for the livability of those units for first-floor residents when they're on a, a main pedestrian throughway. And what, what is their quality of life?
That was me who was pushing for that and it's because they didn't have that many doors along the edges of the buildings. And when I said that, I also meant it could be like a half-story up just to get some, just to break up the facades and have people coming and going.
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah. I, I didn't want to put words in your mouth.
Just as a matter of process, that if you are going to have residential on the first floor, that is a use special permit. Because we're trying to promote commercial on the first floor. So that is a point that maybe the board would want to talk about with. More fully at, at the meeting in two weeks in terms of how much, how important is a commercial first floor? And, because that will kind of, you know, dictate maybe whether or not. They might want to do that and that's certainly a, a, a part of the application that they would need to know in terms of if they're seeking relief in order to put residential on the first floor.
I mean, I'm not tied to there being commercial there. There isn't right now at that street edge. And I'm not sure all the businesses are. I don't, I don't want to speak for the business community, never mind.
I also know that when we were looking at the plans, the one-hundred-foot plane. Well, I also know that when we were looking at the plans, the one hundred foot plane, um, you know, boundary. Is something that they're going to have to deal with in terms of um, flooding, and I think we know that from um, the site that we just went through. At True Value. Um, so it's, it's a considerable amount of the site. That they're going to have to remediate um, or deal with um, flooding. So. Um, and it's right at the, you know, it's right in, straight in the middle of Mount Vernon Street front edge, so. Um, there's going to be some challenges. And a parking, um, you know, first floor parking at the bottom is. It could, we could end up looking at it. I, I wouldn't be in favor of that. I'd rather have open space, but um, you know. That's going to be a tough one. I, I thought we could put parking below because they've drawn it that way. So, i- is that completely off the table then? Or it's just expensive and hard?
I don't think it's completely off the table, but I, I would say that from Mount Vernon or Converse, eh, written into the design guidelines, you would, you, you can't see the. You can't, you would not be able to see the parking.
Uh, I just, yeah, I, I think it's not, I think it's, it's expensive, but I, I do recall that the very first design we got. For six fifty-four Main Street, the Fells Hardware site, did include um, surface parking underneath the building. And we really didn't like the design because it essentially created this unending wall which wrapped around. And there was no, nothing to enliven this, the streetscape. So. That's my concern on that.
Yeah, I think Converse Place is also kind of, um, someone mentioned the back alley feeling of that. And I mean, it's kind of a loading dock currently with parking, right? So, um, you know, trash bins and it's, it's got a long way to go to become something. Other than maybe, you know, an entrance to, you know, on grade parking for, for the building. So that, maybe that is the possibility there.
Uh, E Ching, did you have?
I, um, I was, about six fifty-four, what, what um, percentage did it go down? What was the number of cars it was?
Oh geez, I could not tell you that.
I, I, I believe that they were going to try to supply one space per unit. With a couple of extra maybe for guests and that type of thing, but gen- generally, generally one, one per unit is what. I, I don't think we're going to see more or less than, than that in general of, of new building in, in, in the, in.
But I, I think that, you know, Fells Hardware is a little bit farther, and this is, you know, right in the center of town. It might be a, um, interesting place to become more innovative in our thinking about. Transp- transit, um, you know, uh, bike sharing and, and, you know, car sharing and those kinds of things. Could come into play. Um, I, and if they're smaller units, I, I wonder if, you know, that would be a little bit more. Conducive to, to, you know, she's cutting down the number, but it is so center of town and, you know, cars are just. Humongous, and they take up so much space. So I, I don't, I think that it would be great to, I don't know the transit planning kind of. Um, you know, things that are happening, but if this could be a more innovative way of thinking about that, I think it would be great. I would, I would approve of it if the applicants came back with something, some proposals that would, you know, um. Lighten that load of, of car centric living. Um, I think that'd be great.
So, Diab, can I chine in on some of the points that were raised?
I, I would, actually, I would love to, but we are now at nine oh five.
But I have some really important points to make about this, and I would.
Can you, can you keep it, can you keep it to a minute, please?
Regarding unit size, we should be mindful that the more units, the more parking. With regards to parking, I draw your attention to zoning bylaw seven three twenty dot two, which says. Nope, nope, that's not it. Um, hold on, it's on my other screen. That if the applicant makes offsite parking within eight hundred feet of the site. Um, i- it can be offsite parking, and that's permitted, seven three twenty-five paragraph A. Um, and I will tell you that the garage location behind the public safety buildings is five hundred and twenty-five feet. From the center of Converse Place. With regards to first floor commercial, I agree with the conversation. That it's actually um, possible to have first floor residential as a special permit. And it's possible that those first floor residential spaces can be made in such a way that they could be converted or morphed into commercial space. If and when the demand for commercial increases, but in the, but in the interim, first floor residential enlivens a street. It brings eyes to the street. It makes people feel safe. They see a glowing light behind a sheer curtain. And with regards to Converse Place design, I thought that the proposal by the, um, the developer to make Converse Place into a woo-nor. Was brilliant, and that a lot of that depends on the owners of the properties to the west of Converse Place. Participating in the PUD concept and redesigning their use of the back of that building, and I would heartily support that. Um, so, um, again, I think the other point about commercial is that I think it's really essential to our town. That the back of the building, the building facing the water, um, opening out to that shared public-private. Feel of open space, um, be a restaurant. I think it's imperative that it be a food establishment. Um, and that, that is something that will add tremendous success to the town and to that building. Um, and, um, just for the record, I do not favor keeping the tall, um, laundry building. And I also want to put on the record that there are a number of cell phone tower or cellphone, I don't know the word for them, transponders. Or whatever, that will need to be relocated. Um, and we have bylaws regarding wireless telecommunications. Um, locations in this town that probably would have a serious impact on that. So it's important that we be mindful of that. I favor medium open space, restaurant facing the water, lower building, get rid of the transponders. Um, first floor housing for as long as it's needed, um, or until there's a demand for commercial. And um, Converse Place be developed as a woo-nor for a muse.
Okay, thank you, Sally. Um, since I've given you the opportunity to do a summation, um, would anyone else like to do a summation before we continue? Okay, um, I think I forgot to say something, but that's fine. Um, so, uh, thank you all for your comments. I hopefully that will prep us for what comes before us next week. Um, I have a feeling that there's still going to be some difficult conversations coming up ahead. Um, so why don't we move on to our next item on the agenda, which is liaisons? And Brian, would you, could you bring up our list if you have it handy?
Yeah, let me get that just a sec.
Okay, um. So the key thing on this list is where you see the word representative next to the name on the left. That means that that is a voting member of that board. Other than that, if they're not there, then. Um, you can attend the meetings or you can um, make sure, you can correspond with the chair. Or in order to understand what the concerns are, but we are essentially observers and uh. Reporting back to this board and understanding their processes and the difficulties that they have. Is useful for letting this board know how it could clarify what it does. So for instance, the ZBA may have difficulty interpreting some part of the zoning because it's not clearly written. Um, having that information brought back to us allows us to rewrite the zoning in a more humanly um, understandable fashion. So, um. That's an interesting, I was the select board rep, huh, interesting. Uh, I think traditionally, the select board rep is the chair. Am I not, am I incorrect on that, Brian?
Yeah, that, that's correct.
Or I shouldn't say representative, I should have these liaisons. So, um, why don't we go, so, so capital? Why don't we go through the, the ones which have voting members first? So we have capital planning, which is a fairly important. Um, position because it has to do with the projects that capital planning, um, they accept proposals for projects. Which are going to be funded out of some special funds the town has set up. Um, uh, sometimes the planning board itself can request funds from capital planning for certain things. So, um, someone on that, that's a very important position. Um, the committee on names meets fairly seldomly, and it is mainly to provide names for streets, I believe. Uh, the Housing Partnership Board is the body, the advocacy, the advisory group for affordable and equitable housing in town. Uh, the Street Tree Committee, uh, Brian, I'm drawing a blank on here, I'm sorry, it's late, can we show that in?
Yeah, I'm not actually sure why this is on here, um, because um, it's the planning department. It's not necessarily a planning board, uh, voting member, that's because I'm obviously not part of the board. Um, but so, I'm, I'm not sure that this actually should be here. I think, I, I think.
Well, we have a permanent street creek, street tree committee in our town that is languishing in need, in need of additional appointments.
I think we could replace that with our other tree committee that Diab and I are on.
But that's a separate committee.
That is separate, so this is.
Yeah, because that's sort of a, yeah, it's not on here because it's more likely to get together and put together some.
It's still a working group.
A working group.
Not a, not a, not an actual committee.
So, so the question before this board is, is, or the question before us is, is, do we have a voting position on that committee, Brian?
The planning board does not, but I do.
On which committee?
The Street Tree Committee.
The one that's called the Permanent Street Tree Committee?
Correct.
So Brian is the voting representative. He's, he can vote, but anyone we would provide would simply be an observer. So, we could, we could observe, but we can't really, I, I mean, the key thing is that these are informal liaisons. We're reaching out to the, we are observing them. We're not actually working as part of those committees. So it's not like that we take an active. Sorry, I've lost the word. Uh, we do not participate in those committees as if we were on the committee. So I, I understand, Sally, that you think the Street Tree Committee needs some extra help. But that wouldn't be the role of the liaison to that committee.
Yeah, I'd have to look at the language that established the Permanent Street Tree Committee.
Right, but these.
Configuration is, and whether the members of the committee, um, which members of the committee uh, um, are representative? And which are observing?
Well, since we are selecting the representatives, I, I, okay, we can certainly do that, but traditionally. If we are not a voting representative to these committees, and I know the committees have requested that we retain an observer position. Rather than trying, rather than actively working as if we were on those committees. So I think that's a, that's a important distinction. Um, so. Um, I would like to remain, uh, let's just go through, I'll cross the ones off my list since I'm on a couple of these already. So since the, the, the chair is typically the liaison to the select board, why don't I continue in that position? Um, the other voting position that I'm on is the Housing Partnership Board. And um, I've been on that board for the last, I, as ever since I've been on the planning boards, that'll be six years this next year. And um, I would prefer to remain representative on that board. If someone else wants to do it, we should certainly discuss it, but I would prefer to retain that position.
Can you tell us why you prefer it? Yeah, just curious.
I have a really good working um, relationship with the people on that board. It's also something that I'm really passionate about, which is bringing about affordable housing. As well as housing for peoples who have been traditionally excluded for housing, and also in terms of bringing about. A resolution to the long decades of segregated housing in town. So it's, it's, housing is something I've been passionate about. For a very long time, and it's just, it fits with what I'd like to do. So that, that's my, that's my claim. Um. Now, if we, if we go on to the other committees that are remaining, Heather, um, you are on the traffic, you're on T-TAC. Is that something you'd like to remain on?
Yes.
Okay, and you have a, you have a, a experience, you have a deep history with traffic, I believe. That is your background, right?
Um, I have worked in transportation planning.
Oh, that's.
With the federal and state government.
Okay. Um, the, uh, you're also on the school committee as their liaison?
Yeah, I forgot about that one. I don't, I have not been doing anything with that one.
Is that something that you would be willing to let go?
Uh, yeah, I could let it go.
Okay, um, I just want to go through and make sure that if anyone's, has any claims. Um, let's go scrolling up. The next one up here is, uh, the, okay, so Heather, you're also on the LHD?
Yeah, Brian, I had a, remember I had a question for you because now you're talking about it, about Sims instead, but you said I'm not on that one?
Yeah, I'm trying to see what needs to happen. Um, I, I sent an email to the clerk. About what, if we actually need to post that, um, or not, and whether or not, but it definitely makes sense, you being someone who lives in the district. And is on the board, uh, it just kind of makes, it makes sense. And I want, I'm trying to see, and there's certainly no problem with the numbers. It's a question of if it actually needs to be advertised, and I just haven't been able to. Wrestle down the clerk, um, this week.
Oh, I thought they were already meeting.
We had one meeting.
So who was on it?
Um, for, um, you, there was nobody from the planning board, if that's what.
No, I mean, um, in general.
Oh, sorry. Um, so, um, I can get that up in a second, but uh, there is, uh, everyone's name is, is escaping me. The architect on it is Richard Leef. The historical commission member is Jacqueline Menager. There is a realtor, uh, it's horrible, it's escaping. So, I would need to go look, um, and I can, I can get it in a few minutes. But, or.
So I don't understand that you're saying it would have to be advertised for me to go to those meetings?
To be a voting member of that group, that study committee, yes. It's whether, because right now, so there was, there was an advertisement for those, for that group, people, um, people responded. Um, Jack ran that whole thing, that advertisement.
So I never even knew about that. I just thought, we didn't do that for that other LHD that I was on.
We did, uh, we, yeah, we did have to do that.
Well, let's.
I just went to the meetings. I didn't run for anything.
I think you just had to show, uh, something of interest, an email saying there was a letter of interest, and that's all you needed.
So we have a, we have a, we have a procedural problem here in that, um, apparently you're not, the local historic district. Committee is maybe or may not have a voting member on it, so that's not represented on this list. Um, so we need to clarify that relationship. Um, I think we should have a voting member, so I'm, I think that we should have a voting member regardless of whether or not. Someone submits a letter of intent or interest.
No, but, just so you know, that, that, it's governed by the state in terms of what, of who should be on this, and we're just going through the state. A planning board member is not part of that rubric for the local historic district study committee, just.
Okay.
So it's not like we can just be like, oh, well, we could just make us of a voting member. It's that, we can't do that.
Okay, well then I stand corrected, or I sit corrected. So, um, apart from the procedural issues of getting on that committee. Are, um, are there any members who would, I mean, Heather is, apparently you would like to continue to be on that committee?
Well, I guess it's a different committee now, but I had expressed interest and I did not know that it was an application process, or I would have applied.
Okay.
I live in that district.
Um, is, is there anyone else on the board who has interest? I should have asked that for all of these. I'm assuming that if Heather maintains interest, that she would continue in that position, if that's okay.
That'd be okay with me.
We, we typically don't fight over these stuff. There's.
I just wanted to go to the meetings. I don't need to necessarily be voting. I'm just interested and wanted to know when they were and stuff, but maybe they're. Go ahead.
No, I, I think at a minimum, you can always come to the meeting and, but I, 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 like I said, I haven't been able to find out what process is necessary for you to actually be on there, so, um, but I will figure that out, yeah.
So, so then there, if, if, if Heather is, is if it's sufficient for Heather just to go to the meeting as a non-voting member, she doesn't need to be on this list.
Correct.
Is that, is there, unless we want to make her our official liaison, it, does this board feel like they should have a voting member or at least have someone apply to be a voting member on that list, on that board?
I think in this particular case, it's not, it's unnecessary. And that's my opinion.
I will follow your opinion. Does the rest of the board have any opinions? The rest of the board seems.
Well, I thought it was, well, I mean, I think I'm just sorry, I'm like confused about this one, but when we had the other one, I thought it was helpful for me to be there as just as a planner, because that skillset wasn't represented in the group. There was the realtor and a historic person. And.
And an architect and a, and if it's in a business district, it's a business person, but that's not here. And this is, there's two homeowners. Uh, two, you know, property, property owners.
Well, I would, I would recommend that if we have a liaison to the historic district, that they take it upon themselves to determine whether their skill is important on the board or not. And they would make that decision. I mean, every historic district is different and, and so Heather, if you don't feel like this is a mostly residential district, as far as I recall, and so it doesn't require planner skills that you, as you said, you don't need to be on that board. You just need to be present as a liaison. Is that cool? Okay, so, uh, let's, let's see who else is on there. Heather, you are on the finance committee? Are you a liaison to the finance committee? Is that something you wish to continue doing?
No.
Okay, so we can delete that. And I think that's the, okay, and so then I am liaison with the CONCOM. And to be honest, I really don't have, I haven't done very much with that and I don't have a lot of time to do more with it, so you can remove my name for the CONCOM. And, um, someone else who has time to do that can do that. I'm also the unofficial representative to the climate action advisory committee, which is not on here. And, um, I'm fine if someone else wants to go on to that. It's, it's really just sitting and listening. There's really very little. It's simply a liaison role. So, um, if someone else wants to go on that role, by all means, um, that's fine. So I think great, Brian, you've been deleting all of the other ones. So why don't we start with capital planning? Uh, who would like to be a rep on capital planning? This is a voting. This will require, um, some work prior to the town meetings.
I would like to nominate one of the two architects on this board.
Can we do this when Cheryl is here? Cheryl's not.
Oh, she's gone?
Yeah.
Okay, so why don't we leave that one open? I think that unless we wanna give her, uh, action item while she's gone, which is the best way to get things done. Assign them to people who are not present. Okay, so we'll hold off on that. Climate action advisory committee, uh, who would like to be on that one?
Is there a limit to how many we'd need to be on?
Well, we'd like to, there's not a minimum, but we would like to fill them. So if this isn't, this isn't your first choice, why don't we go this way? Is there a first choice? Like, for instance, Eicheng, is there something you really wanna be on?
I think the school committee, uh, because I'm the, uh, has children in the schools. But, um, I'm just a little worried about how much their, their meetings are intense and long too. And so, I mean, it's just understanding their agenda and then coming in.
You don't actually have to go to all the meetings. This is merely, it's a liaison, so if you choose to, you can. Or you could simply, you know, every few weeks, talk to the school committee chair and see if there's something which is of interest to the planning board. So it doesn't require your presence. EFPC is actually, thank you for redoing that. EFPC is the committee that comes into
Yeah.
action whenever we have, um.
My husband is on that one, so I shouldn't be on that.
Okay, you have, you have a get out of jail free card there.
I have to babysit during those meetings.
So you've got school committee. Uh, Sally, did you have one that you really wanted to be on?
Well, I would say my first choice would, well, what's not on here is the master plan implementation committee. And I also, um, would be very interested in helping with the permanent street tree committee, as I was talking about earlier, um, including the working group to update the bylaws, the town bylaws on, on public shade trees. And, and there's also a recommendation in the master plan that landscape zoning, that our zoning bylaw be amended to include guidance on the preservation of trees on private landscaping. And so all the tree issues is something that I am very close to interested about.
So, we are, we are, um, the, the separate tree committee, we already have two planning board members on there. So if that's Heather and myself. So, so what?
The historical commission and the master plan implementation committee and design review committee.
Okay, so master plan implementation committee, we are gonna bring, we're gonna be discussing that next week.
Excellent.
Because more than one of us will probably be on that committee. That is a special committee. And we actually don't know what it, how it's composed. So why don't we put Sally as historical and on design review?
I could do one of the environmental ones, either the, um, can you go up a little bit, Brian?
Yeah. Yeah, I think we've got a bit of a lag here.
Um, either climate action or conservation commission. I don't really know the nuances of.
So the climate action advisory committee is, um, they will, they're an advisory board to the select board on, essentially everything the sustainability director is going to be doing. So it's a future looking thing. CONCOM mostly deals with, um, projects in town which, which fall within a certain distance of some sort of a water or conservation. And so they deal mostly with permitting. Okay, so climate action for Eicheng. And then Sally, you are also on design review, I believe, right?
Yes, and to, to be honest with you, I've taken a lot of time to understand the wetlands bylaws in the town or, or in the state, at least to the point that I do understand them. And if, if it's helpful to serve as the liaison to the conservation commission, I'm not opposed to doing that.
That would be excellent. Thank you, Sally. So why don't we put Sally on CONCOM? And we should leave some room for, um, from Cheryl. So, uh, let's see, the field management committee. This is a committee which has to do with athletic fields in town.
So this was me and this has, I, I think that it's not so much of as a very active committee that I, I don't think. Yeah, there, there's not, there's no real, real lifting at all with that.
Okay.
I have a suggestion about capital planning. Do you mind if I give you that?
No, go ahead.
So I would love to have one of our architect members be on capital planning because so much of the discussion has to do with the built environment.
Right, and that, that, I, I think that's why we, we decided to held off on designing that until Cheryl got back.
Okay, good.
Somebody, somebody has suggested that. I will do committee on names if no one else wants it. It meets extremely rarely. I don't think we build that many streets. I would say, uh, why don't you? So the person on capital planning should not be liaison to FINCOM. Because both of those committees go into action before town meeting. And if you wanna track one, you can't track the other, especially if you're voting on capital planning. So whoever is not on capital planning should be on FINCOM. The MBTA advisory group is, I think, fairly important, especially as we're coming up with the, uh, reconstruction of the, um, the train station downtown. So Brian, are you now currently the only person who is on liaising to that group?
So that group basically got the, got the design to a hundred percent and we have not met. We, we, we are not, uh, we have not been active at all. There's been nothing to, to do yet because, um, yeah, there's been nothing to do there. Uh, so I would imagine when implementation starts. So they're starting obviously demo now. But there's been, there's been, um, nothing and there won't be for a bit, but, uh, we did have two members. It was Maureen and Heather Von Mering. And it, um, obviously there's, there's a, a large role for the planning board to play. As well as the planning department in that, but it's not, I don't know when the next time we're gonna meet or whether we'll actually be the same group or whether it'll be a different group.
So why don't, why don't we keep this in advance for a while until we learn more about the role it'll play once construction starts?
May I offer my services, Diab?
Oh, sure, sure.
So in, in the time.
You only have so many evenings a night. Remember that, Sally.
No, I do know that. So in the time of our three-year term, my three-year term, the, this pro, this MBTA station will come to fruition. Um, and there are a number of important, um, planning board issues that I would be happy to participate in conversations about.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you for taking that on. School committee, I think, Eicheng, you have.
Heather didn't want it, is that correct? Heather, did you say you didn't want it?
Oh, um, I don't mind, but, um.
Oh, you can take it. I don't.
No, I just said I hadn't done anything for it. And I think the reason, the reason I was on that one is cuz I was one of the people who what, didn't have children in the schools, but that doesn't make sense cuz the, the other Heather's the only one that did. I don't know.
Oh, so there would be a conflict of interest, should there be?
No, no, no at all.
Maybe I'm remembering that wrong.
I don't, I don't see it as a conflict of interest.
Yeah, I think Heather Von Mering was on too many at the time. And that you were the only other one with kids. And I think that, I think that made it, you were like, well, it makes sense. Because I'm the lead, I, cuz you at least had your ear to that for your own kids, so, um, anyway.
I, I think that Eicheng, if you, if you wanna take it, Heather, I, I.
Yeah, that's fine.
You're not wed to it.
Okay.
So I think that we have done, so FINCOM isn't really going to meet until they're gonna take a deep breath after what happened over the last town meeting, so they won't meet for a while, so we still have time. I think that who else? We have the finance, yeah, so the field management committee. I, you know, that's a pretty static thing at this point, I believe. I don't know that the planning board has much of a historical role in that.
No, there's gonna be expansion of field space, but that's not happening now. I think that's when we would get involved, as if there's gonna be an expansion of land, you know, government land use of whether it, but, you know, this is talking about timing of fields and condition of fields and, and that type of thing, which is not, that's not the growth and development of town.
Yeah.
Question about the field management committee, Diab?
Yeah.
There is a proposal in town for, uh, a swim facility in Skilling's Field, and would that discussion be centrally managed in this committee?
That has, I think, in the past, no, that's a select board decision.
Select board school, it's a school, it's actually, it's actually more of a school thing, um, because it's school, it's school land, so, um.
Yeah, it's not.
There's a, there's a role for us to, to make a, uh, an opinion, and have an opinion. But, yeah, but we're not, we're, we're just, just like anybody, anybody else, to be honest.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, EFPC is, is, is a, is a important committee when we have, you know, for instance, when Lynch starts up. So I think we can, we can, we have to remember we have these unfilled slots or else at some point we'll wonder why we don't know anything about something, but. And then we're gonna leave capital, so capital planning, I think, I hope everyone understands that that's where we get recommendations for funding large projects and we're gonna leave that until until Brian comes up with special colors, I guess.
Well, I, now, instead of highlighting that, now I'm gonna highlight the things that we haven't done.
Yeah.
That, because the rest of these are getting filled in and it's just gonna be the sheet, so.
Right.
So EFPC, like capital, is a place where somebody with a really good understanding of how buildings are designed and built is, I mean, this is a great place for architects and we're so lucky to have Eicheng.
It's, it's Cheryl then. No, my husband's on it.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, that's right. It's Cheryl, yes, yes. So we'll, we'll put Cheryl's name there and she won't even know. Cheryl, you're not listening, are you?
There's this joke about if you leave the meeting, you get assigned everything.
Oh, yeah. Always assign action items to people not there. That's, that's, that keeps them in meetings. Okay, so I think, I mean, I, I hope people.
It's at the bottom of the page. I can't see what's below. Oh, thank you, Brian. Oh, I see, okay.
So.
And I had a question about ZBA, Diab?
Oh, yeah.
Um.
Oh, I forgot ZBA. Somebody else should be ZBA.
I think it's, it, it's really important that a member of the planning board be at these meetings in case there's a question. And I was wondering if it would be that it could be a rotating kind of a thing that, that, you know, um, whether it's ad hoc, you know, on the moment at hand, as soon as the meeting is posted, there's a discussion. Or whether it's a strict rotation by alphabet with, you know, with a, a second or whatever. I just, I think that there's so much going on at the ZBA that the planning board can care about and it would be very instructive to all of us.
I agree. Um, so in the past, I went on the ZBA and I wrote the, um, our transmissions, as we call them, of our emotions. And I thought that was really useful because I, you know, tried to sum up the, the, the context of the board's decisions and was able to relay them. I have also discovered that the ZBA typically treats everyone the same in terms of, they treat you as a member of the public, so you, if you try to speak up during their deliberations to hopefully clarify it, they will, if they're polite, which they usually are, remind you that it is not yet open for the public to speak.
Right, even though you're not a public, you're a board member.
Well, no, according to them, I am a member of the public.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I, I have on occasion forgotten that I was not there to provide them with, with my expertise until asked, so.
Well, as the clerk, I'm drafting the recommendations from the planning board to the ZBA. Um, I'm happy to attend meetings if no one else can. I still think it's a great idea for people to rotate just for the educational value of it.
I, I completely agree. I think, I think watching our, our, well, we, we, they're not really our zoning bylaws, they're the towns, but we do have special interests. Watching them being applied uh, can sometimes be a, a real eye-opener. Because what we, what we think we've written is oft, is sometimes not what is, how it's being interpreted. So for instance, there are a number of things that I think we need to redesign in our bylaws so that they are more easily interpreted.
Right, I call it the case law approach to understanding our zoning bylaws.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great idea. So Sally, I, what I suggest is that we revisit this list, say in three to five, six months and see if people are still comfortable or if they feel like they're really, their interests have shifted, we can revisit the list and, um, make some reassignments.
And I do, I defer to others any time others wish to not, wish to be there.
Okay, so we have totally blown our meeting budget and I apologize. Once again, we seem to be left with no time to talk about. Once again, we seem to be left with no time to talk about our organization. So. Next meeting, we have next meeting, we have a split meeting. The first part of it has to do, it's the, the North Main Street presentation. Then we do have, correct me if I'm wrong, do we have an hour or an hour and a half with Ian Gillespie, Brian?
We have an hour and it's not just, it's not just Ian, but I would imagine it's Ian Gillespie and then Jan Steenbrugger, who's the, Ad Maliora, the private investment firm. And then I doubt they'll have the architect. I doubt they'll have an, have an architect there. But I, I guess I don't really know. But meaning that it's just not just Ian is what I'm trying.
Right. I, I meant, what I really meant to say was ten Congress. And I also, Brian, just noticed your chat message of at eight fifty telling me the time was up. And that was very polite of you, but can you, I never, I never can see the chat while. So you just speak up and yell at me.
Sure. I, I can yell, I can yell at you. That's fine.
Yeah. Um, so we then have that. We also have set aside time for the master plan implementation committee. So I think, I hope we can finalize how we want that set up. And I don't, I can't go into more details right now because of course it wasn't on our agenda. I'm still trying to find out. I really want this goals and it always seems to be left to the last. And we have 20 minutes left and I really don't think people want to go until after 10. So my thought was that what we could do is we could, when we next do this, which I don't think we have time to on June 8.
We don't, I'll, I'll, I'll just, I'll just say that we, there's no point in trying to squeeze that in into June 8. We have petitions as well as the North Main Street study and, 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 and ten, ten Congress. So. But yeah, looking at, looking at town, the next one to two town meetings in terms of legislative priorities or housing priorities or priorities related to studies, those kind of three things are certainly really important. I'm just wondering when we're going to have time to talk about that.
Well, we have to make time because we're not gonna.
We really do. We really do.
I, I, so what I would, and you know, this is, this is, I mean, as you can tell, even though I have let this go a little longer than I, the discussions, we, every two weeks gives us very little time to discuss some things. So. If, when we next schedule this, which will not be next time, but the time after that, if I could ask everyone to come with their top five priorities that they would like to see accomplished. And please think about them. And I did have a whole agenda that I wanted to work through tonight. And I worked through this with Brian yesterday, was it yesterday? So we want to look at what our policy objectives are, our broadscape things like affordable housing, main street development, for cleaning up some of the parts of the zoning which are unclear or which have had impacts that were not considered. So for instance, definition of a half story. I think this board just recently had issues with understanding it and they're not alone. So those are some of the things. Then we want to look at what kind of studies we want to do. So we have policy objectives, we have studies, we have implementation. So we're looking at zoning changes. We're looking at what kind of projects we can do with, say, the select board for the housing production plan, projects with the housing partnership to deal with affordable housing. So then think about law, long and short-term projects. So we can think about things in terms of what are we going to do at the next town meeting? Knowing that we have to get our initial language in probably beginning of July. Because it's takes us a few months to go through and come up with the final language. Then it has to go through public hearings and legal. So there's always like a two or three month lead before we get to town meeting. So think about what we might be able to do in six months at next spring and next fall. So for instance, if we want to take a bite at ADUs, that may be something we go for next fall. Unless, you know, again, thinking about how much legwork we have to do ahead of time. Maybe we can do it next spring, but certainly not going to come up this fall. So think about any long-term, so think about long-term projects in terms of town meetings, which is when we can get zoning done. And also think about it in terms of years, like for instance, we're going to have to come back and do a a review of what we've done on the master plan in like two or three years. Because the master plan has to get reviewed and we have to fess up to what we've done and what we haven't done. So we have to think about what, what can we get done in the next two or three years on the master plan? And if that's something which requires money for studies, we need to schedule those so that we get them done in time. And so then we have to think about things like, some people have particular interests. Like you might have an interested in historical preservation. You may have an interest in, you know, trying to prevent, you know, mansionization, things that, that make you want to be on the board. And that would fit in with some of the other. So, you know, there's, there's the big plans that everyone agrees on. There's the stuff that you yourself feel is important to you. And if we can fit that into the time we have, we have to, you know, we have to be careful with Brian's time because he has a lot of stuff that gets done outside of what you see in the meetings here. So prioritizing and scheduling. So come up with, you know, if everyone would have come up with a concise five-minute description of what they would want. And, you know, it would be even better if you could write up an outline and share it before that meeting, which hopefully will be in four weeks. So that we are prepared going into it. And I apologize, I had planned on coming up with a outline of lots of things, but I just ran out of time and that's just what happened. So.
What about funding an assistant planner position from building permit fees?
Heather, I hope you have.
Too soon. I think the word too soon, I think is the.
No, I, you know, if Heather wants to wear some really good alligator-proof boots and wade into that swamp, then I'll, I'll, I'll pull you out if you want, but I don't think I'm going in with you.
It was a joke.
I know it was a joke. But I should notice that one of the, one of the housing partnership top things was hire an assistant planner. It was also in the master plan. So it is something that we need.
Yeah, I was thinking assistant planner and then I was making a joke about how to fund it.
Yeah. Well, I think we need to actually push that. And we have to remind FinCom that. So there's a, the previous override was a red that passed, which, you know, factored in greatly in this last town meeting. Actually, we discussed putting in a salary for another planner, a assistant planner position. And the original override, which was then later slimmed down, did have that position in there. And I think everyone on this board understands how important it is to have that position. So we have to make some noise and we have to make it so apparent that we need it, that we will get the money. So that's, I'm, I'm very hopeful.
Just as a sidebar, related to the sustainability director and the planning department in that the new sustainability director will be sharing space with me on the lower level.
In your office?
Correct.
You happy about that?
That, so, yeah. Sure. Yeah. Sure. No, no, um, no, of cour-, of, of course. I mean, if you've, if you've been in my office, it's one of the largest offices on the lower level, like, you know, months ago, they're like, is this possible? I was like, what? I'm going to be the guy that says no? I gotta have the biggest office. So of course I welcome, and I mean, it's a, it's a large room, of course. I don't see any issues.
I see that there could be great synergies.
Well, you work from home anyway, so it's a, it's a non-issue.
At the, well, June 15th, COVID is over. And that's a whole other conversation.
A government pronouncement?
Pretty much. According to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, which is, so there's going to be some changes, you know, I, I put in some calls to legal and had some brief conversations about exactly what does this mean? So when the emergency order lifts, which is scheduled to lift June 15th, there are obviously all of these other emergency measures that are not going to be legal anymore. For instance, the one, one that's in front of us, meaning the planning board, is whether or not we can continue with remote meetings or, or whether or not we have to provide a physical space in town hall or in a public, in a public space to, you know, and, and for, for these public meetings. So it appears that at June 15th, that, that the remote meeting emergency order will be extended. But we're going to have to kind of, at, at the moment, we, we don't have a brief yet from legal. But our legal team, as well as every other municipal legal team right now, is trying to determine what this means starting June 15th. So this is definitely going to be, you know, going to affect our boards as well as every, every other board. But as of right now, we are, are told from the manager's level that, you know, a town hall will be playing to try to get all staff to be at a hundred percent by June 15th. So that's, that's what we're, that's the directive. Obviously, there are cases that, that people can work remotely and that, you know, from, in my case, it's contingent upon the planning board. But in other cases, you know, different departments are different. But the point is, is that we are being directed to go to a hundred percent if possible, starting June 15th. So.
Does that mean town hall is open then?
Correct. That's, that, yeah. That is correct.
Okay.
Um, and it's unclear if it's just free for all in terms of office hours or, or sorry, if it's just like open to the public for the entire day or whether it's going to be open to the public for a certain amount of time. It's, I don't know. A memo out of the manager's office should be coming soon. Today was their first reopening committee meeting. I'm glad I'm taking this towards the end because I think, I, I didn't think there was going to be any time towards, towards the beginning. But the idea is that some type of official positions will be changing in relation to town hall, town hall visiting, mask wearing, like all of that. So.
What about the library? Who's in charge of that decision?
That is most, that is the, there's a, a board and the director, Anne Wharton, the department head. She's essentially like a department head. But yeah, it's a board, the, the, there's a, a board of, I don't know.
Library trustees.
Thank you. And, and, and Anne Wharton and the, the library director.
So, um, yes, that will be exciting. We will figure out, as soon as we figure out what's going on, there are questions about if we want to continue with some sort of hybrid Zoom live meeting model for town residents, how we do that with the technology so they can, we can hook people in or not. All of that has to be worked out. It may be that we don't get that all running smoothly at first. It's only, you know, a couple of weeks from now essentially, and there's a lot going on. So we may end up with the old-fashioned meeting in person if that's required by law. And then we slowly add in more modern abilities for residents to interact with us. But that's all, I think, a big question mark right now.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a little bit strange because it's, it's June 15th date that's lifted by, by, by the state, by the governor. You know, it's kind of unrelated. It's like, why wouldn't you just wait several more weeks until at least school was out for everybody across the Commonwealth? Because everyone's been doing whatever they've been doing since fall. So, but I, I personally think the idea is to allow businesses to start that, that summer season of business and it allows them to start planning for, for what, what to do. I, I think it's more of an economic reason in terms of why they would do it June 15th. It just seems, it was out of the blue for many people.
So let me, since we are, we are five minutes out from closing time, as it were. So let me, we, we, we have tried to reserve the last five minutes for action items so that we can make sure we catch up on things. And so I would like, I've already kind of handed out a few action items for our discussion on our planning and scheduling for the planning board, but we will be doing, thinking about the master plan implementation committee next time we meet. And so one of the, a lot of questions we had, we, the previous board met, I think, early in March or late in February to discuss different ways of setting this up. It really is up to us. We could, for instance, set it up. We could consider it to be a committee that is, that is a point that is, has town meeting status, that is appointed, that's set up by town meeting and that various boards would have members on it. We could say that it is offshoot of us. Do we want it to be independent of the planning board? I mean, all of this is all wide open. There are no, I mean, there may be precedent as to what other communities have done, but there are certainly, we have flexibility. So think outside the box in terms of how you think it would best represent what the town needs. Cause we, I mean, this is, this is a town thing. It's not just the planning board thing. So we want to make sure. And we also need to, you know, think about what the workable size for the committee is. So for instance, we could have a small committee and if we have a lot of people interested, they could set up subcommittees or to report back. There are ways to manage large numbers of people. Uh, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the master plan committee, which set up the master plan was, we had, we had a lot of people. We had like 18 or 19 people on there.
Yeah, I think somewhere between 16 and 18, something like that.
And, you know, it certainly was large enough that when we had absences, they could be covered. But I think it also meant that some people didn't feel they had real ownership of the process. So some people didn't show up that much. So there's a, you know, there's a ineffective working group as in how many people can work together at the table at once. There's a representation issue and all sorts of things like that. So why don't we, if you can arrange your thoughts so that we have a fairly efficient and conclusive discussion of this when we next meet. That would be great.
You mentioned three structural scenarios. One is that it would be something that would be set up by town meeting. One is that it would be just a planning board like run.
Yeah.
And then what was the third one that you said?
Uh, I just thought of it being like, I, I, I said completely independent. But I don't know, that was just, I don't know how that would get set up. I was just, I, perhaps I was too far outside the box.
No, I think outside the box is.
I don't, I don't know how, I mean, they also have, somebody has to appoint them and, 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 you know, we want to talk about how long people should be on the boards. You know, do we want a, a diversity of expertises? You know, what are the talents that people should, we don't want just people with specific expertises because we want a representation of the people in town somehow. So a lot of complicated things go in there. But it's something, you know.
Is there prior conversations documented about this topic?
We had one. It's, it was right at the end of the last board's meetings. So I think, I, I, I don't know that that is, since three of those people, well, Cheryl's back.
Yeah.
Uh, so we, you know, maybe, I, I don't recall which one I, Brian was.
It wasn't talked about at the level of the master plan committee, the 19.
No, no, no. We essentially said, I think what we said earlier on was that there is a difference between coming, between coming up with the plan and implementing the plan. That there may be a different skill set. You might want to have some overlap because the people who are on the master plan committee may have remembered more of the context. But you might need a different set of skills to actually make sure this works. And I, I think that was, you know, that was my takeaway. So.
So the action item is that planning board members will think about and come to the June 22nd meeting with thoughts about how it will be created and how it will, what it will, how it will be composed. Um, numbers and expertise and sources of people, like different committees or whatever, and term lengths and a workable size.
And yes, the only correction is that's. And yes, the only correction is that's will be on June eighth. That is our next meeting.
Oh, June eights, good, okay.
The meeting after that will be for people to have their thoughts gathered on what our goals, et cetera, are.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Okay, um, according to my clock, is, does anyone have any more inputs on that, other than saying that that's too much?
I do think the five priorities is a lot.
Okay.
I would, I won't, I, you know, but it might be nice to hear number four, number five. But it seems like better conversationally wise. Easier to prioritize and collectively would be three.
I think that's a, that's a very good point, so I think that, how about this? Prepare five priorities, but only present three, because it may be that some of the priorities take longer than others. And so you might be able to sneak a few in based on the timelines, so, you know. But I agree, three, just prepare to discuss three. It's sort of like having extra slides at the end of your slide deck, right? Sometimes you can pull one out, but.
Yeah, I can just imagine that conversation getting really long.
Longer than tonight.
Yeah, it's ten oh one, I'm so impressed.
Yeah, but that's only because we dumped forty minutes of talk. Right, we did.
I'll make a motion to, to end, to close this meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, I suppose we should do a roll call, uh, Sally, please.
Aye.
Uh, Yicheng?
Aye.
Heather?
Aye.
Curious eye for not. Thank you very much, WinCam, thank you much, Nancy, our recording secretary. Thank you Winchester and the Peanut Gallery and we will see you all again in two weeks. Good night.